We'll, uh, we'll call the special meeting to order. We'll have a roll call of council.
Counselor Gueye, Counselor Martel, Warden Marshawn.
Present.
Counselor Bushet. Deputy Warden McLean.
Present.
Okay, moving on to item three, which is, uh, receive, consider, approve recommendations for the Lewesdale Evans and Whiteside Water Treatment Plant Extension.
Appreciate you folks, Mr. Warden, agreeing to call the special council. As Chris will explain, uh, time is of the essence and that's why we couldn't wait for, for two weeks. Hi, Chris. We do apologize about that information out earlier, but, uh, Louis said it's all very short notice. We, we closed the tenders on, the end of the day on Thursday. Been reviewing them since then and, uh, in fact, I wasn't able to receive a written submission from the consultant. We had to speak via the phone call or via phone. We put together this, uh, this recommendation. So just to correct one item, I did make note that the tender pricing puts us 10% over budget. That should've said 6%. And that would be based on the, uh, the cost we've accrued to date and also the commitments we've had other than just the construction tender. Just to review, we put the construction tender out on August 9th. We've already pre-purchased the equipment that was through another tender that closed some time ago. Uh, the tender closed on September 7th and we received three bids. The lowest bid of the three was Briling Construction and the total price, which includes HST and a 10% contingency was just under 2.5 million. Next lowest bid, quite close, was John L. Jim Concrete Construction and the third bid was Dora Construction Management Limited. The consultant and, uh, and ourselves have reviewed the tenders and we are recommending going with the lowest bidder and we've taken their pricing. We've, uh, taken the, the HST rebate that would apply to it. And when we look at the project and the costs we've accrued to date and what we anticipate spending, we are forecasting approximately a 6% cost overrun. The good news is, in speaking with finance, uh, we did identify there's additional money in the water utility. We hadn't consumed all of the, uh, the capital depreciation account in the water utility. There was money remaining even after the planned funding for the project and there's also a capital account in the water utility that had a small sum of money. So that along with any, uh, any, any money remaining in the budget from 16, 17, and 17, 18 would be enough to cover the shortfall and still have some money left over. So we're looking tonight for approval from council to go ahead and expend those funds to cover this cost overrun so that we can award the work.
Okay, any discussion? Chris, the, the 10% contingency, is a chance we may not use it or you think it's gone?
Uh, I don't anticipate we would use all of it, even if we had to use some. Generally, you're going to run into something that you may not expect, but there's also areas where we could potentially save. Uh, so I'm hoping it will remain untouched and if we do have to use it, hopefully it won't be the 10%. It may be a fraction of that.
So, but the 6% overrun is with the 10% contingency included?
It's excluding the 10% contingency.
Oh, it's excluding it?
Yeah. So if, uh, if we wanted to be conservative and assume that we may use a portion of it, we may very well be back up at the 10% overrun, which is still able to be covered by the other monies in the utility. I'm comfortable that without any unforeseen situations, we'll be okay.
Okay. So I guess we need a motion. What about the utility, utility and review board? Are we okay with expending the capital?
Yeah, we, we did advise them that our backup, if pricing came in higher than expected, that we would use additional monies from the asset, sorry, the depreciation fund, but I will be sending them a submission in writing, alerting them to the fact that we anticipate being 6% over and letting them know where the money's going to come from, just to make sure that, uh, they're okay with, with what we're planning for the financials.
So to be clear, these costs are the costs for the, uh, the installation of the filters? This is not a cost including the purchase of the filters?
Uh, the overall cost, that 6% overrun includes all of the costs, not just the construction tender. Uh, so that includes the treatment equipment itself, the plant, that includes the, uh, the site works, the building, the engineering. Uh, so that would be the overall project budget that is estimated now to be 6% over.
And where are they from?
The contractor, it would be from the, uh, from, well, not Sydney directly, but from CBRN.
Around there.
Uh, but there is some local content. I know one of the, uh, the contractors doing the site works would be local here, Superior Contracting.
Okay.
There may be other local content, I'm not, not entirely sure, but.
Okay. Okay, we need a motions. Everyone okay or is there any more? Oh, sorry. Counselor Bushet?
Thank you very much. Chris, uh, do I understand you're looking for a motion for the overrun?
I believe it's a motion for the overrun and we also need council approval because the monies are coming from, uh...
Depreciation.
One of them is the depreciation account and the other one is a, uh, it's a capital reserve account in the utility and we can't spend those reserve accounts, as I understand it, without council approval.
Okay. So on move that we accept the recommendation of the Director of Public Works?
It's been moved by Counselor Bushet. Is there a second? We have no choice. And it's been seconded on discussion.
Question.
A question's been called, but I just have one, one other question. Uh, so there's two reserves in the water utility or is this a capital reserve in the general?
There is the, uh, utility depreciation fund, which is the, the primary source of the, the 25% we were short. And then the other one is the utility capital reserve account.
Okay.
Uh, that one, uh, I don't know the exact number I'm going to say, which I do have it. $65,646.
But I'm wondering if we need a motion separately, cause that money I didn't think was in the water utility, was it?
That one is specific to the water utility?
It's specific to it, but was that actually, wasn't there in the audit, a discussion about transferring that money over? You guys remember that?
It may be a surplus from 2016, 17 budget possibly.
I thought it was something that they noticed, but it was in the general that was kept there, Louis, when you were there, that Stewart had.
Oh, was this related?
When I was there, it's legit.
This was a $150,000 deferred revenue possibly?
I'm not sure. No, it was, it was, the number was 65,000.
Okay.
The number, it was in, it was a capital reserve under the general that was slated to the water utility. It's never ever transferred, but...
Yeah. So that, that may be why we need the council motion, so that it gives us approval?
Ability to use that.
Exactly, yeah. So you reviewed these with, uh, with the Director of Finance and, uh, and he, he's the one who suggested to you that you proceed in this manner? I see he signed the memo. Correct, yes. Okay. So there's the, essentially the three accounts that we're looking for approval to draw from, one being the water utility capital account, the second being the depreciation fund, and the third being if there's any monies remaining from the 2016, 17 operating budget or 2017, 18 operating budget of the water utility. I, I do agree with you, Mr. Chair, that perhaps it would be a nice idea to have the first motion with respect to that last paragraph, uh, approval from council to withdraw the funds from those various utility accounts. And then the second motion to proceed with the, uh, with the tender as being recommended by our engineers. That's suitable with you folks?
Go with that motion and I'd like the other motion about transferring. Do you guys remember that issue? And if you're saying 150, I thought it was 65.
Yeah. It may be two different issues. It's, it might be best to...
Cause he has it there worded as the utility capital reserve. So, okay, it's been moved and seconded. Questions been called. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carried.
Thank you. So that, that motion was to accept the recommendation regarding the utility funds?
Yes, to use the depreciation and the utility capital reserve, but should we also make a motion?
Yep.
To look into, you wanna make a, Gilbert, to look into the, uh, the reserve that was left over or that the accountants found on the audit?
Yeah, so...
Cause they said that should be transferred to the water utility. So maybe this is it, but in case it's not, let's make a motion to transfer that, whatever that number was. Is that okay? Can't put a number on it?
I don't know. We, we don't have any, uh, I'm not sure if that would be, how you would word that motion.
To transfer any? Yeah. Well, the motion should read just to transfer, uh, any, any, any funds, I guess, that were kept in reserve for the water utility but never transferred.
If, if there are any funds that were kept?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, the 65,000 you're mentioning is the number I remember.
If there's no funds, we won't have to transfer anything.
We won't have to transfer anything, but Jason will know or the, the auditors, if they're in this week, they'll know. Maybe I need to just look back.
Okay.
Or I put my note on that. Don't have it here.
Okay.
So make a motion for that, Gilbert?
Yep.
And you'll second that? Okay, move and second it on discussion. Questions been called. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carried. Move to adjourn.
No, we need a, we need a motion to actually approve the contract. You've made a motion to, uh, accept the recommendations in that last paragraph regarding utilizing utility funds and another one, but we should have a specific motion to, uh, award the contract, whatever name that company is.
Berlin. That's a very...
Well, tenure award to Briling Construction Limited.
It's been moved by Counselor Bushet that we award the tender in the amount of 2.4 to Berlin Construction for the construction of the Lewesdale Evans and Whiteside Low River Water Treatment Plant. Is there a second? Seconded by Deputy Warden McLean on discussion. Questions called. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carried. There's nothing else. Chris, those are the two things?
That was it, yes. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move to adjourn. Okay, we're gonna call the committee of the whole meeting for September the 11th to order. Uh, second item on the agenda is the review of the minutes. You've had them in your package. Need a motion to accept them. It's been moved by Deputy Warden McLean, seconded by Counselor Bushet, that the minutes of August 16, committee of the whole meeting be approved. On discussion. Questions been called. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carried. Moving on to item three, which is items to be added to the agenda. Uh, you had an email with some items that were added. Are there any to be added by unanimous consent?
I have one. Be added to, on a grant application.
Okay. Good. And, and I have one as well. Uh, and it's to do with posting the budget online. Uh, we might not need a motion for that, but I think we should have one. So is that okay? Okay. I'll need a motion to the, to approve the, uh, agenda with the items added in the email and added here tonight.
Yep.
It's been moved by, moved by Deputy Warden McLean, seconded by Counselor Bushet to approve the agenda. Uh, discussion. Questions been called. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carried. Moving on to item four, we have, uh, three presentations, I guess. Why is the mics? Is there any other on?
Your laptop maybe? Is your laptop on mute?
No. Close enough. Is your mic on? Okay. Uh, the first presentation is Partnership for Municipal Innovation. Carla Arseneau and Mayor Brenda Chisholm-Beaton, Re Local Economic Development, the Association of Cities, I guess, and a discussion under trip to Vietnam. Come up to the mic and hit the red button. Here, just hit the right-hand side. There we go.
Okay, thank you very much, Warden Marshawn and Council. My name is Carla Arseneau and I'm the Chief Operating Officer of the Cape Breton Partnership. We're thrilled to be here today. Mayor Brenda Chisholm-Beaton from the town of Port Hoxbury is with me as well. Um, we're going to talk a little bit about, uh, the Partnership for Municipal Innovation, Local Economic Development, or PMI LED, as we call it. It's a project that the Cape Breton Partnership threw the Cape Breton REN. Uh, it's a project that we embarked upon a few months ago. We wanted to update council on where the project is at today and see how, um, we can work with Richmond County going forward and, and how we might, uh, involve and, and get the, uh, community, uh, participating in the project going forward. So the project is a partnership between, uh, the Cape Breton Partnership and the Union of Nova Scotia Municipalities. So a few months ago, uh, the Cape Breton Partnership Board decided that they wanted to get involved in an international project and became part of the partnership business plan and we set out to find an international project that might be a good fit. Um, we found the PMI LED program and we went through an application process. We ended up partnering with the UNSM on this initiative and the partnership with the Cape Breton REN, um, and all, and therefore the counties of Richmond, Inverness, and Victoria are now part of this, um, broader project where we have been partnering with the, um, Federation of Canadian Municipalities on this broader, um, international project. So the program is coordinated by the FCM but funded through Global Affairs Canada. It is almost a four-year project. It will end in November of 2020. Um, the objective is to essentially work on LED technical assistance, knowledge sharing, um, and community engagement. Uh, there's two, two-week missions a year. Uh, we host two study visits over the program where the, uh, delegation from Vietnam will come to Canada. And, um, as I mentioned earlier, so it is funded by Global Affairs Canada. So all the travel accommodations and meals expenses have been covered by the federal So our project, and we're going to talk specifically a bit about, um, the project and the mission that we took this past June. Um, so we are partnered with an association called the Association of Cities of Vietnam. So within, uh, Vietnam, they don't have the same municipal government structure that we have here in Canada. So this association is essentially the link between the cities within Vietnam and the central government. Um, Vietnam had the population of almost 93 million people and our project is to work with this association, which represents about 117 cities and towns across, uh, across the country of Vietnam. So quite large. Um, we're gonna be working with them on helping to develop a strategic plan. Uh, they run a training center, which they're hoping to get some assistance on to look at how they can incorporate, uh, similar training to how the UNSM and the FCM, uh, have, have their training for counselors, that sort of thing. Uh, we might be looking at some HR resources and planning or some financial sustainability and, and general knowledge sharing. So there's a number of different objectives that we're gonna be working on with them.
And so the Association of the Cities of Vietnam would be the closest thing that, to FCM in Canada. So they basically take care of all the municipalities.
Yep. So the project timeline, so it just started, our first mission was in June and it will end around November of 2020. Um, we, we held the first mission, we were gone from the 19th to the 28th of June. Uh, right now, we're in the phases of finalizing the project plan, which will be what will follow over the course of the next three years. The second mission will be held either November, sometime between November and January of this, uh, later this year. And then they will be coming to Canada probably late May, first part of June. So we're hoping to tie it in with the FCM conference, which this year will be held in Halifax. And, uh, we're hoping to bring the delegation from Vietnam to Halifax and then continue on to Cape Breton, to show them the fine hospitality that we have here on the island. And then the project will continue from there. There'll be another trip to Vietnam and so forth. So the first mission, uh, there were four of us who attended. Bruce Morrison, the warden for Victoria County, was there representing the UNSM. Pearl McCleod, counselor for Victoria County. Mayor Brenda Chisholm-Beaton from Port Hoxbury and myself. The trip, uh, was broken into two parts. So we spent the first four days in the city of Hanoi in the northern part of the country. Uh, Hanoi is the capital of the city of Vietnam and has a population of approximately 9 million people. And it is also the home of the association of which we are working with, the ACBN. And interestingly enough, 2010 had earmarked 1,000 years since the establishment of the city of Hanoi. So very much steeped in history and, uh, very much a, a beautiful, interesting place. Uh, the second part of the trip, we spent, uh, we had flown to the city of Kanto, which was in the southern part of the country on the Mekong Delta. Uh, Kanto is the fourth largest city in Vietnam with a population of around a million people. Um, it is considered the western capital and, uh, often the Mekong Delta area of which, where this is based is often, uh, they refer to as the rice basket of Vietnam, which contributing more than half of the nation's, uh, rice production. So Ho Chi Minh City, which you'll see on that little map there, is, um, is north of that. That's actually the former city of Saigon, if you've heard of the city of Saigon. So we just wanted to show you some pictures and, uh, we wanted to, we thought the best way to display, uh, some of the moments from the trip was just to show it through, uh, through photographs, so, um, and Brenda and I can, can talk through some of these slides, but, um, these first couple here were just taken on the street in the city of, of Hanoi. And, um, you know, there was a huge population, people going around, lots of food production, uh, very, very small side of the road operations in some cases, little shops.
Very busy. The, the biggest mode of transportation is scooters and motorcycles, um, although there was plenty of vehicles on the road.
Yes.
I think I recall, um, in Hanoi, their, their government was a little concerned about the influx of more vehicles being injected into the city and more bike traffic. But it, it's really super amazing that every single block in Hanoi, every single block had commerce on it, either small market commerce or storefronts, but it was just an incredible thing to see. There was, uh, the, the city was really driven by business incredibly.
Um, this slide here refers to this dark contrast between sort of the old and the new infrastructure. So, uh, with the picture on the left, actually, um, Warden Morrison asked us to take this because he has a friend who works with Nova Scotia Power and he thought that he'd be interested to see all the fine wiring, uh, that you could see on every street corner in Hanoi. So, um, certainly a contrast of the old and new. The photo on the right is a large bridge in the city of Kanto and on one side of the water, so this is the Mekong Delta, on one side of the water, you have a booming city with modern bridges that light up in the evenings and, and big hotels and across the water, they got electricity two years ago. So...
Huge divide between...
Yeah, the old and the new.
The old and the new.
Yeah. So we talked about this briefly earlier. We did survive traffic in Hanoi. Uh, if you have some time to Google it, it is, uh, a wonder in itself.
Alarming.
Very alarming. Uh, traffic signs were mere suggestions.
They were just suggestions.
And, uh, and as you can see in the photo on the right, a family of five on a scooter. That was pretty, very much common.
Pretty common.
They're, they're not carrying a television at the same time, so that makes it slightly less dangerous than some of the other, uh, things we, we did see, but, um, because of the huge population, everybody had scooters. They were, um, and they could fit just so many more people on the roadway. People were working in office towers and coming out in their, you know, fancy clothes and climbing on a scooter to go home, so. Bustling cities, so, um, as we mentioned, the city of Hanoi with 9 million people, um, they had a, where our hotel was located, a, a very large, um, lake in the center of it and, and the workers on the left-hand side in this photograph were, um, busy taking care of the grounds. Um, you see people, the bottom right-hand photograph's a little bit difficult to see, but, you know, um, people who, on bicycles and carrying all their wares that they're selling as they're going through the town. Um, and then the huge in the top right, you'll see, uh, the large number of, of scooters just everywhere you look. They're lined up. And the poor living conditions, as we mentioned, uh, across from the city of Kanto, just across the water, a distance that a, you know, um, a strong swimmer could, could swim across. Um, the living conditions were just so extremely poor. Um, you'd see children and you can see on the, on the right-hand side in particular, you can see some of the litter that's in that water and whether that, whether that litter is coming down from, from the north, from China, or, um, you know, it's difficult to say, uh, you know, what that, uh, where that is from or if it's just local, but, um, the conditions that they live in. Most people were bathing in these rivers. Uh, we did a number of boat tours around and, um, you'd see children swimming in it for play and then you would see them, you know, with a bar of soap, uh, having, having a bath at the same time. So, yeah. Incredible food, um, some incredibly, you know, fresh fruit we've never, definitely never seen before. Um, lots of seafood because they are on the water. Uh, they are a coastal city and, um, you know, food was definitely in abundance. Everywhere we went, our hosts, uh, the Association of Cities of Vietnam were incredibly, uh, kind and generous and, you know, every meal was, you know, a large table. Yeah, every meal was a celebration and, and they...
Every course meant something, like it was supposed to be the, for the sight and the taste and the colors, everything kinda had to do with the experience and we, they certainly showed us an incredible level of hospitality. I think one of the meals was like nine courses or something.
Yeah.
Just like, after the fourth, I just was trying to like pass mine off to my neighbor, but it was delicious.
They did take us to a number of different, uh, places.
Traditional.
To show us some traditional food and, and cultures, so. Uh, beautiful children. One of my favorite photographs that I took on the trip was on the left-hand side with the girl jumping out of the boat and, um, you know, for us, it was, um, you know, you're watching the people who are, you know, for us, you see the poor living conditions and you, you know, you feel sad and you see these children who are so happy and, you know, nothing but smiles on their faces, the children everywhere, you know, honestly, I, you didn't, um, they were just full of joy. And, and like in Canada, the child in the bottom right, even though they just got electricity two years ago in this area, he was playing on an iPhone, so.
They were everywhere.
Yeah, and, and I will say that is the technology there was not an issue. Everywhere you went, Wi-Fi was available. Um, we had no, we have more challenges here, so, for sure. Um, probably the highlight, I think, of the trip.
It was amazing.
Yeah, for us was, uh, they took us to a float market. So because the city of Kanto is on the Mekong Delta, um, a lot of their commerce is done right there on the water. So, uh, a lot of farming production that is done in that region of Vietnam, but, um, a lot of the wares, you know, the transactions and the, um, was done right there by boat.
So it was about 4:30 AM in the morning. Uh, we got up nice and bright and early to go, uh, experience this. So, um, there would be bigger vessels and then smaller vessels that would go along purchasing some of the fruit and product off the other larger boats. And most of the smaller vessels were actually purchasing things to bring back to their own restaurants or, uh, little cafe-style restaurants and such. So it's kinda like wholesale purchasing all the boat.
Yeah, so there were, I would say, uh...
Pretty cool.
Thousands of boats, probably?
There was thousands of them. It was incredible.
In the water and it's, it's dark and the sun was starting to come up by the end of it and, um, so, you know, there might be a boat full with just pineapple or a boat filled with watermelon.
Or jackfruit.
Yeah, and people were trading, um, from one boat to the next.
Oh, they had, um, if you wanna go back, the, their advertising was, they had these huge poles sticking out of the boats and they hung all the wares they had on the boat on the pole. So you could see if they had watermelon or jackfruit or fish or whatever, cause they, there would be one hanging on the pole, so you knew what, what was on that boat. So you didn't have to waste your, your paddling.
We visited an ecotourism operation. Um, there's a couple of, actually Brenda and I are in a couple of these photos. Uh, we were making, I would consider it like a pastry or dessert, um, but they also, uh...
Rice noodles.
The top left-hand corner is, was part of the, yeah, making the rice noodles.
Rice noodle process.
Yeah. And the lady in the bottom middle photograph was, was actually taking those big round circles and cutting the rice noodles there.
We had a lot of rice noodles.
Yes. Uh, we visited some business associations. So, uh, the city of Kanto had a business association that we visited. We got to see, um, a startup business incubator where we got to meet some small businesses that were in the startup phase.
This, that was actually one of my favorite, one of my favorite places that we visited was this green, I think it was called Green, Green Space or something along those lines?
Yeah.
And basically what it is, it's, it's kind of like, a little bit like Island Sandbox in ZBU, but it's for 16 to 18-year-olds, it's for youth. So the gentleman, there's, I think you can see him right in the very corner, um, a young gentleman who I found out after the conversation was only 16, had a patent pending on, um, uh, digital, kind of like a, I guess... like a, I guess, a all things monitor for like a medical health monitor that you can have with an app on your cellphone so that it would just tell you if you're having a medical episode, it would tell you what it was. So if you're like, oh, I wonder if that's angina or, or I wonder if I have indigestion, it'd be like, heart attack. It would automatically call the hospital for you. So I'm like, how old are you? He's like, I just turned sixteen. I'm like, that is just incredible. So, you know, they put, they invest quite a bit in their youth and, and innovation and they just let their youth just go and create. And anyway, so this is one of the places that we visited. It was pretty, pretty amazing.
So that's just a bit of a snapshot on, on some of the things that we did while we were there. But I think if we, you know, you know, as we sat back afterwards, I think we all kind of came away realizing that despite all of our differences, at the end of the day, we're exactly the same. You know, they have a lot of this, you know, while some of their challenges are a little different than ours, ironically, they're not the ones with the.
Broadband.
Conversations as we will talk about later, but.
A little bit different conversations.
But, but no, we're all the same. They were absolutely friendly.
Yeah.
Never saw a negative person the entire time we were there.
They were very, very kind and hospitable and there were, everybody we met, like we, you know, we really bonded and lots of hugs when we left.
Absolutely. So the bottom left-hand picture was taken in the city of Kanto and that was, so there were two groups. It was the Cape Breton Partnership UNSN group and the FCM that are, we are partnering with the Association of Cities of Vietnam. But there was also a group from the city of Edmonton and the town of Roseland, B.C. that are partnering together. And they're working on a project on regional economic development in the city of Kanto. So the way the FCM structured the trip was that we travel from Hanoi to meet that group in Kanto so that the trips would overlap and the two groups would have a chance to learn from each other. So that's a picture with all of them, along with the Association of Cities. And the lady who, in the center with the black and the red on her dress, she is actually the head of the Association of Cities of Vietnam. And then the group on, on the right, same group, but that was just outside of the ecotourism operation that we had visited. So in terms of the next steps, the first part was communicating with our partners. So that's part of why we're here this evening. We're working on completing the project plan. We have a document which we have to submit back to the FCM later this week, which will go back to the association in Vietnam and to move on. We, we essentially have, you know, to plan out the next three years of the trip, of the, of the project. And after that, there'll be the next trip to Vietnam, probably in November, and then their trip here. Those are sort of the immediate next steps and expected outcomes. So improving our local services from learning from others, increasing our capacity on our teams, building a stronger reputation for our community and our organizations, fostering trade at a local, for local businesses in our community. We're really hoping that when they do come here in the spring, that we'll be able to meet with local businesses in the area and see if there's any opportunity there. And then encouraging community engagement. And so really, I think what we'd like to do is, you know, we wanted to, to show council here, you know, what this project is all about. Hope to give you a little bit of a flavor for what we did and what we experienced and hope that if there's another trip in the future, that you might consider being part of it and being part of the visit when they do come here to visit us in the spring.
Okay. Just to make one other, one other comment, I guess, one of my, my own, I guess, I guess, kind of selfish expectations of, of the trip was to, to really go there as an ambassador for Cape Breton Island. And I will say that, you know, that by the time we left, they, they were just blown away. We had shown a couple of videos compliments of destination Cape Breton. There was one in particular, it was showcasing all of the Gulf, all of the golfing all over the island, including Dundee, and they were almost falling off their chair. They're like, oh my God, I can't wait to go to Cape Breton. So I mean, we showed them all kinds of other videos as well. So probably close to a hundred delegates, really high-up delegates in Vietnam. Like now they know where Cape Breton is, they, they know what we're all about. So I mean, right there, that's one good, important thing that we accomplished just in going is just.
Absolutely.
Sharing, sharing Cape Breton with the world.
So they're really looking forward to coming here. The.
They are.
The CEO of the organization is an avid golfer, Mr. Hi, and he, he definitely wants to come here when it's golf season. So.
Absolutely, yeah.
Any questions, Brad?
Any questions? Do you have some?
I'm just gonna ask.
Your mic, your mic, your mic, your mic, your mic.
Do I understand that despite, you know, some issues with standard of living parts of the country, that everything is about innovation? And I mean, how do they get, you know, the modern telecommunications and so on? They must put everything into that.
Well, it's, so Vietnam is a communist country.
Yep.
And, you know, and in the conversations that we had over there, some of the discussion was centered around, you know, they see their rich cousin China to the north, their rich cousin Thailand to the west, and they're, they're progressing. You know, those countries are growing, you know, and they're, they're prospering. And I think Vietnam, despite, you know, their challenges, I think they recognize that, you know, if they want to grow, they're going to have to let some, you know, they're going to have to let some private investment in. So while certainly there are some limitations there, there's no question. I, that bridge that we showed you in one of those photographs, our understanding is that that was built by a Japanese company.
Yeah.
And that was partially private sector funded. So that's a, a very big step for.
And there is, there is the understanding at the level of the Association of Cities of Vietnam as well, that they realize that the fastest-growing sector is private sector. So they're, you know, they're, they do have a certain amount of commerce that is government-driven, but they're realizing that they, it's, it's more expensive, the ventures are more expensive, less successful than just letting the private sector kind of steer. So they're, they're in the process, I think, of figuring things out. So, and, and part of the going there was to try to figure out their background so that we can best help them. Because I mean, we kind of have, we have to understand their foundation before we can offer up maybe some suggestions for how they can engage with their citizens more, you know, how they could best establish themselves as a kind of an FCM in Vietnam type thing.
The organization that you're saying is like the FCM here, what organization was that again?
Association of Cities of Vietnam. So that is the organization that we're partnering with.
Who will be coming here?
It'll be them.
Yeah.
And they're, they're made up of the business people?
So they represent, the, the ACBN represents a hundred and seventeen towns and cities within the country of Vietnam.
All of them?
Yeah. I don't know if that's.
Madame Vin, right?
Yeah. So Madame Vin is.
Madame Vin, she's the, she's the deputy mayor of the city of Kanto. So a lot of the representation, the, the higher-up positions are elected officials. So they'll be, they'll be coming with probably some support staff.
Yeah. So they're, they head.
How many business people coming?
I don't know if we know at this point how big the delegation will be, but it will be a, I would think it will be a mix of, of elected representatives like Madame Vin and, and then some senior staffers. So Mr. Hi would be the equivalent to a CEO and, and Madame Kinson, who would be like the COO. They would have been, they would likely be the two top staff people that would come. And then you will, I suspect we will see.
Then they have one or two support staff.
Yeah. That will come with them as well. And then, but, so the head of this association is the deputy mayor of the city of, of the fourth-largest city in the country.
Okay. No, you just, you just thought maybe there'd be some, some opportunities for business and, and trade. So just wondering who's coming.
From now to 2020, hopefully, like the more we teach each other.
And the next trip is planned for November twenty seventeen?
And, and that would be mainly support staff would be going. So probably Cora and maybe somebody from.
Probably myself and, and at this point, because we're partnering with the UNSM, I suspect that they will probably put it out to their board first. And because they are, they are partnering with the UNSM, so it'll likely be myself and somebody from the UNSM. But they may, you know, in June, they didn't send anybody directly. They, they put it back to, to our three municipalities. So I think we'll just, you know, we'll have to see whether they send anybody or not. The last conversation that we have at the FCM about a week ago, you know, we'd originally been saying November, but now it's somewhere between November and January is when that trip would take place.
What's the weather like down there?
Really hot.
So when we were there, and of course it was June, the end of June, the first week we were there, it was a heat wave. So the northern part of the city where we were, the northern part of the country in Hanoi is typically a little cooler than the south. And it was, the temperatures were in the mid-thirties with humidity was high forties. The day we left, it was almost, it was around forty-nine degrees on the tarmac when we got on the plane to fly to, to the city of Kanto. So that's not normal.
You easily, you easily could have showered in change three or four times a day because you would just soak yourself.
But it won't be that in November. I've been assured.
A lot of the pictures you have, the water looks brown. Is that the honest color of it?
That is the honest color of it.
Honest to God color.
Yeah. And, you know, I, I would, a few mornings in Kanto, I went for a run by myself and I kind of run along the water. And, and, you know, the fishermen and their fishing and there's styrofoam and bottles and.
Yeah. Like that's, that's part of the discrepancy between like super-modern and super-clean city versus the Mekon River and the other side. But there are a lot of poverty and.
But again, hard to say how much of that is coming in just.
I mean, they, that might not be their litter. That could be litter coming down the river.
And, and the infrastructure there, like water, sewer services, stuff like that?
I think most of their basic infrastructure is pretty much up to snuff. I mean, they, they do have some, I know some of the sidewalks needed some work, but.
Yeah. And I mean, obviously the wiring on the outsides of the buildings was a little, we actually saw one where there were plugs on the, in the tree. Like one where there was, you know.
And I think the city, the city kind of had a target, a green target. So they were, you know, trying to save as many trees around the city as they could. So some of the roots were kind of pushing up some of the stones on the sidewalks and such. But a lot of beautiful cities, you would not think you were in a city with the night, you know, that amount of people in it. Like was it ninety million in Hanoi?
Nine.
Nine million? Because there was, there was green vegetation everywhere, all through the city. Like it was really.
The gardeners that I showed in one of the photographs that, that was right in the city of Hanoi. And they were everywhere.
It wasn't a concrete jungle. It was like.
Yeah. And you felt very safe. I can, I, I think I felt safer.
Except for crossing the street.
Except for crossing the street, you felt safer there, I, I would say, than in most Canadian cities.
Yeah.
Yeah. You, I'd never, at any point did we ever feel like safety was an issue.
People were really nice.
Yeah.
Thank you for the presentation. And maybe if it's opened up, maybe some members in our council can go.
Yeah.
I think they'd be used to the transportation modes. Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you very much for having us.
Moving on to the second presentation, the Cape Breton Partnership, Patrick Austin, who's EDO for Victoria County, and Jeff Stanley, who's EDO for Richmond County.
That's interesting to hear those ladies talk about connectivity everywhere. I was talking to somebody on the way over tonight and I got cut off. There you go.
That's more televised.
Pardon?
That's what they just don't. It's televised.
So, yeah, I was hands-free, honest.
Yeah. Okay. You guys can start. Patrick?
Hi. Thank you for having us here tonight. As you said, my name is Patrick Austin and I'm with the CBren, the Cape Breton Partnership. I'm an Economic Development Officer for them. I've also been the project lead on the CBren broadband, rural broadband strategy for our three counties. So I've come here tonight to talk about what we've been doing and what we're hoping to do with, with our broadband strategy. Also, there's, there's two things that kind of come up that people often get confused. So there's a broadband strategy and then there's cell phones. So we're here about the broadband strategy. Now I know with the cell phones, there's been a lot of questions, the cell signals because that is also an issue. But that, there is a separate committee that I believe the CAOs and the wardens are part of as well with Ananquinish County, District of St. Harry's and a few other. And that is headed up by Glenn Horn from Ananquinish County. So that's not something we've been dealing with, but it's something we could help to come be a part of. I've been trying to get ahold of Glenn Horn the last few days there with, with no success. But I know it's kind of went stale a little while ago. I think your last meeting was in March or April.
February.
April.
February.
Was it?
February the eighth.
February the eighth. So if there is another meeting and you would like the, the ren to, you know, come to that meeting, be a part of, we'd, we'd be happy to, to come and then see in what ways we could assist along with the cell phone strategy. So that being said, I believe you all have a copy of our regional broadband strategy. I'm just going to go through that to make sure you have an understanding of what's there and then see what questions you might have in the end. So the first background to it was we initially started off, there was a connect to innovate program that came out. So that was some federal funding to help increase the, I guess, the possibility of, of greater, greater internet. So the CRTC came out and said that everybody should have, the standard would be fifty megabytes of download speed and ten megabytes, ten megabytes of upload speed. So if you ever did a speed test around, you're probably getting anywhere between one to ten megabytes a second currently here now, which is well below where we need to be. So with that, we wanted to see what funding we could get, you know, through the CBren for the three counties. And so we started our application. We brought on Group ATN Consulting to see what would be possible. And through that, we had meetings with the ISPs, the stakeholders. We went around and realized that after talking to the ISPs, there was no business case for them even applying for the funding to go, with the exception of two areas that they looked at, which was Bay St. Lawrence and Fort Shu Bay. But they were putting their own applications in for those places anyway. So there was no, there's nothing we could do at that point. So we're like, well, this, this isn't going to ever get Cape Breton to be at the connection speeds that the CRTC is saying. So, you know, after, you know, some more consultation, we decided that we need to pull together the three counties and the three First Nations communities within those counties to create a strategy that's going to enable us to make use of this funding and be a single point of contact with the ISPs. A few meetings that we had with the ISPs, they were a bit aggressive to start with because different counties were coming to them, different groups were coming to them. And they're like, this isn't even something that we have a business case in. So once we, they realized we were part of, of the ren representing the three counties, they're more likely to talk and were able to see some, some options that could come down in the, in the future, which also included the possibility of Rogers coming in, which could help add some of the competitive nature there and help maybe get some greater coverage. So that's what brought us to having a few meetings to kind of see the stakeholders and bring our committees together, which brought us to the creation of our, our strategy. You know, and the main purpose of, of getting it is just for community development, to increase our infrastructure and to increase the possibilities of economic development through our brief interviews that we've had with the ren and just out there talking to the businesses. That's one of the number-one issues that comes up is insufficient internet access. And there's a lot of bigger businesses that would like to come to this area, but they need, you know, better than one and a half to ten megabytes a second of download because a lot of their equipment is run off it, including even within fish processing plants and, and businesses like that. So the, the key elements to our, to our broadband strategy, I'm going to summarize those, but it's, you know, the, the compilation of basic information to inform for development and quantified requirements of broadband infrastructure investments, bring all the parties together, enhance the capacity of social enterprise, municipalities and First Nations, increase a framework, or a framework for increased accountability, greater visibility of funding requirements. That's where the biggest aspect comes to. The CRTC. The CRTC and the federal government are talking about seven hundred and fifty million dollars more funding that's coming up within the next two years, starting, uh, next year. So, we need to have a structure in place that we're able to, uh, go to the ISPs and work with them so that we can capture, capture this funding. The provincial government is also coming out with their broadband strategy that was supposed to come out before the election. Unfortunately, it didn't come out, but they're expected to come out with, uh, a fairly sizable amount of money that we can, uh, try to, to attract and go after, as well as the federal government's gonna be coming out with expected, uh, Connect to Innovate Two program after. So, the seven hundred and fifty million's definitely the one we, we need to go after, uh, when it comes out. Just to kinda put in perspective, it's about sixty billion dollars if you were to get all of Canada up to there. But most of the areas are up to the minimum requirements. Most of the areas, um, that do need it have no, uh, business case either for it, so it's funding to help there. And if we are to bring everybody together and have a committee that's able to attract this and get our applications in first, then we're gonna put ourselves at the top of the competitive side of it and hopefully get that funding so that we can, you know, have the lowest cost to, to our counties and still, uh, get the funding that we need. So, with that, bringing this together, having a single point of contact to share information and post techni-, techno-, or technology partners. Uh, so with the international side that we need to meet up to is making broadband affordable. Um, so with this, having that voice, being able to talk with them is to keep those prices down, connect homes to broadband and get people online. So, everything from our basic services to doctor's appointments, um, to even equipment running, there's now fridges that are coming out that track your food as you take it in and out, and they're gonna be able to go and order food, uh, from the grocery store before you even get it, just to give you an idea how this is going to continue to, to grow for what we need. So, the strategy goals and objectives, so promote the development of world-class ICT infrastructure in Cape Breton to support community and economic development, improve connectivity for businesses and citizens, and improve services, uh, delivered to residents and, uh, constituents. So, the overall broadband strategy include increased bandwidth capacities for use in Cape Breton, facilitate the extension of bandwidth availability to rural and underserved areas of Cape Breton, uh, thereby bridging the urban rural digital divide for high-speed connectivity. Just a few businesses we've been dealing with that, uh, are already here that are, are web-based, that are, uh, a few have moved and a few have been talking about moving, um, because they're not able. One in particular is in, uh, Victoria County, uh, Trusco Media, I believe they're called. So, they do web design for US government sites, um, and they've reached their max where they can grow their business. So, now they're talking about moving to a larger urban area or possibly even the states to continue their business going. Uh, I've talked to them and showed what we're trying to do here and go, and they just kinda said, well, if you can do that within the next three years, or at least start that, we can get higher speeds and we're gonna stay here. But they want to be able to grow and bring in, uh, ten more programmers to work with them. So, it's the sort of businesses that we could attract. It's also the ones that we need to keep that are currently here. So, with, with, with this, um, so while there's an existing memorandum of understanding between the participating municipalities and the CB Ren, there's consensus that the development of a broadband strategy would benefit from a separate resolution, um, that would be approved by participating municipalities, but also bring the First Nations through this. A lot of these things, as you build your, um, your internet infrastructure, you're gonna need, uh, what are called anchor points, and those can be created in different municipal buildings, but there's also, um, broadband cables, uh, and fiber brought to many of the First Nations communities now that aren't being utilized. So, we could have anchor points there that could then, uh, support the growth of the infrastructure through the rest of the counties. So, having the First Nations communities involved in this and having an MOU that involves them would be of , uh, great importance. Uh, so following an, uh, adoption of the res-, of the resolution, uh, we will work into phase two. So, we've already done phase one and discovering what we need to do. Uh, so there'd be certain tasks that would be involved within phase two. Uh, the first would be an overview. So, um, following the draft charter, which is included in the documents you have, uh, we would launch our committee, which would be involved of, uh, a six-member committee, uh, so one from each county that would be, uh, picked by you, uh, for your county and one from each of the First Nations communities. Uh, it would be headed by myself, uh, but we'd also need to bring on a technical advisor, and that'd be one of the initial costs that would, would come out, but be divided between the areas. Um, a lot of this is, you know, there's people that are spending their entire, you know, lifetime working on this, so we'd have to bring that sort of expertise into this so that we are competitive and get the necessary technical information that we need. Um, so task one, uh, so with the project la- launch, the deliverables would be a summary of decis-, decisions following the launch, meeting in accordance with a rigorous approach, uh, to affect project management and keeping with the principle of good governance, um, in a refined finalized project charter. Uh, task two would be the gap analysis. So, that would be, uh, in consultation with our technical advisor, seeing exactly where we're missing, where we need the infrastructure, where the biggest loopholes are and where the greatest strengths are. So, when these applications do come out and we are applying for them, we have the data ready to go so we can apply and have our applications in first. Um, so the detail, so the deliverables would be a detailed, uh, report and gap analysis summarizing, as I just said there, um, and our basic planning document. Uh, task three would be public and stakeholders engagements. So, going out to the public, seeing their thoughts, seeing where they see the gaps at, but also, uh, talking with the ISPs, who would be big stakeholders in this and starting that relationship and having that single point of contact with them. But preparing it so that we did, they do see the business case, they do know we're also going for the funding, which is gonna help them and make it affordable for them to service our areas. And then from that, we would gather the, the data and bring it back to, to all the stakeholders. Uh, task four is technical specifications and funding requirements. So, once we do see where all the gaps are, is putting the data together to see how much this is really gonna cost and where we're gonna need to get the funding for and how that's gonna work. Um, so, uh, clarifying and understanding the financial implications of the whole broadband strategy. Um, and then taking that and making sure all the, uh, partners understand where it is and where it's gonna go so that we can approach the, uh, and get the funding. Uh, task five is a forward plan and strategy. So, once we do know the funding, we have a draft plan put together, uh, we'll look at the cost parameters for each case and start building the case, uh, that once again comes to ISPs and then we'll go on our application for our funding. And then task six is just specifically looking at the funding strategy, um, and how this will go and what monies will be needed, uh, from the municipalities as well as the First Nations communities and different sources and, uh, ways we can do that, so we'll have the lowest cost. Uh, so the next steps is to have an MOU signed, uh, from our previous meeting. We talked that we're going to get together with and bring the MPs and the MLAs together so that the CAOs and the wardens, uh, we can all bring this up to them so that we have them pushing this from the federal side as well, so that we are on the top of the list to grab this funding as it comes, um, and then also further consultations with the First Nations communities. Do you have anything?
No, I think that's gone.
So, are there any questions?
Open the floor to questions. Deputy Warden McLean?
Thank you for the presentation. Um, I, I would like to maybe, uh, and I don't know if this is on me to do this or not, but certainly invite you, uh, and take you up on your initial offer with regards to jumping on board with anything that can be done with regards to looking into the cell service. Um, I know that that's probably one of the major issues, um, that some of the residents in my district, much of my district is comprised of very, very small communities, to the extent where they're experiencing significant issues with their landlines, let alone cell service. Um, so anybody and, and any help that could be offered with regards to looking into that would be greatly appreciated. Um, and in saying that, I guess, is just, you know, just a hope that when it comes time to looking at the strategy for broadband, which, you know, understandably so is different from cell service, um, just that the, the smaller people are, are not kinda left out of the loop, which will often happen when you're bringing in bigger companies and they're weighing their feasibility. So, I think that we really need someone to go to bat for many of the smaller communities that we have within our, within our county.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, we can definitely, uh, I'm gonna continue to try to reach out to Glenn Horn. I'm sure I will get ahold of him and see when the next meeting they have planned and, uh, since we're invited, we will, we will attend that meeting and see what the partnership can do.
Mentioned to you, that was gonna be the question. Councilor Boucher, any questions? Patrick, you spoke of your final step, getting this memorandum of understanding, but earlier you say there's an existing one between the Ren and the municipality. So, the memorandum you spoke of is that with the municipalities for funding? Cause there's, there's one signed already to start this strategy.
Uh, that hasn't been signed for one with the strategy. The existing one was, uh, was just with the partnership or with the Ren and the municipalities going on. Doesn't include the First Nations communities.
Okay, so that's new when you mean. I guess, on a dollars and cents thing, where do you think funding-wise municipalities are gonna have to be for that so they can budget?
We won't know until we start and we bring the committee together and see exactly, uh, the technical advisor's gonna be the biggest cost to come up off the beginning. We estimate that could be between fifty and sixty thousand dollars for the first year. A lot of that will be with salary and administration costs that go to do, to go with that. Um, so...
Is that money that will come from the CRTC or is that, are you gonna be, are there still gonna be an ask for the three municipalities too?
Uh, there's, there's different options, but initially that could be an ask from the three municipalities. But when we bring our committee together, we'll look at different sources of funding. Um, so hopefully maybe that can come from somewhere else, but there is a potential that could be an ask from the municipalities.
So, the two areas in Cape Breton that, uh, Bell had applied for and received funding, that was strictly broadband?
That was strictly broadband, yes.
Okay, no, no cell, extra coverage at all? Cause I had the assumption that the Fort Shu-Franboys area, there was a bit of, they were gonna try to do something for the cell coverage?
Well, uh, officially as this application went, and we don't know if any of those applications were approved or not, they haven't come out with that. Um, even though they are separate issues for funding and how they go, they're all still run off fiber. So, it's hard to understand why they want for, you know, why they put a business case in Fort Shu, so it could have to do with cell coverage. That's not information they've disclosed to us. Uh, Bay St. Lawrence did have to do more with, with actual, uh, broadband, and that was bringing a fiber line up there while, um, cause he did have one as far as Incanish. Um, a lot of lines are often called dark fiber, so there is fiber that's run throughout the area, but there's actually nothing going through it. There's no, uh, communication going through it or, you know, it's just laying there ready to be used. Um, so cell phones, they can run off the same fiber, so building one structure can eventually help the other. Um, but that's just information we don't have, if that's truly what Bell, Bell is doing. Bringing this together and bringing everybody together and signing the MOU and continuing on, then we do have that voice and we can start, you know, it's, it's much more of an impact in each county trying to go and talk to them as opposed to, you know, the three counties and First Nations talking to them, then we can start asking those, you know, questions and pushing it more. Um, there's also now that there are lines being, you know, dropped with the CRTC rulings, that, um, there's a irrefutable right of refusal. So, if there are lines there and they're not using them and another company wants to come in and use those, they can't say, no, you can't, especially if funding's been used from government money. They have to lease that out to the other companies and then they can use it. So, if Bell was to have a line that went all the way, um, to Fort Shu Bay, and then Rogers came in, decided they want to start building, and Bell's not doing anything, then Rogers will have the ability to utilize those lines and, and grow the infrastructure. So, Rogers is showing a bit of interest coming into Cape Breton, and we've had discussions with them already, um, about different possibilities that they could do. I think a lot of theirs is cellphone-based, even though they're trying to go under the, uh, broadband strategy.
Is, is the areas of, of, of low cell coverage and low broadband coverage, are they similar areas? If you overlay one map over the others, it pretty much a match, or what are we lacking more of?
I haven't seen that data, you know, that close, but I do know, you know, from our, from our interviews and our own, our own studies that it's, it can be quite a bit different depending. And that really comes down to seaside and where seaside coverage is and how many people are off that, are running off seaside. So, uh, if there's strong Bell cell coverage, uh, they may, that doesn't mean, like a tower could be, you know, one place, but their fiber lines that run off that, uh, with their anchor points might not have stronger internet service there. So, they're not really comparable, although, you know, by coincidence, they, they may have it. An area that has a low population probably doesn't have...
Either.
Yeah, probably doesn't have either, so...
Thank you for the presentation. Any more questions?
Um, so am I, am I right in saying that there still potentially could be something happening in Fort Shu?
There, there could be. The applications haven't gone out, or, well, they've gone out, but they haven't, uh, been announced what has happened with them.
Okay.
And Bell, you know...
They're not likely to release that information until...
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. No, I, I just, I, I know that we, I believe we had submitted an application and it was denied because of the fact that we really wanted to focus on cell service, but our application did not include, um, broadband.
Ours was to the broadband strategy, though.
And that was denied? Is that correct?
There, there was a, there was a separate provincial program.
Yeah, that's the one we were denied, but if, my understanding is Bell, they were approved for the one in Franboys, Fort Shu.
Okay, I'm, I'm, yeah, I wasn't aware of that just yet, if they're approved.
But I can't say I have that in an email.
Well, no, and maybe if I could just get the mo-, where we kinda stand and where, what the most recent relevant information is, because I do often get that question.
Yeah.
And I just wanna deliver whatever the message is, I just wanna deliver accurate information. So, if I could...
Cause when we met in February, uh, the gentleman from Ontario, from Bell, came down in their engineering department and those were the two applications. And my understanding was they really thought they were gonna go ahead with those. So, I thought something would be done by end of summer, but I haven't communicated with that gentleman since.
Those, those applications would have been in, uh, the middle of Aprils when those would have been submitted.
That was the deadline.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then, uh, as far as I've heard, there's been no release of, of who's been approved for those specific applications yet. You know, uh, Bell is a big company, so they may have...
Yeah.
You know, more, more sway on that, but...
Cause our meeting was more about cell coverage. Yeah.
Yeah, and, and the provincial program that came out, uh, back in...
Was broadband.
Was, was broadband as well, and that was, uh, that was from, um, money from a previous strategy that had to be spent by the end. So, they released a maximum of seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, per application. Um, but that was strictly for, for broadband. I know some did go under cell, but that wasn't eligible in the end.
Cause that's what we were looking for then, cell, when we got somewhat turned down for that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, this evening, uh, by, by the way, you, uh, spoke, uh, about how, uh, Bell and the other, uh, providers are private sector companies and, uh, getting them to disclose information before they're ready to is a little challenge, so...
Yes, definitely.
But, uh, so are you looking to, uh, if I understood, uh, have councils pass resolutions?
Yes, we would agree for them to, you know, sign on to the MOU, then we can provide that.
And was that a sample resolution in your package?
That was a sample resolution, yes.
And, uh, and so, uh, that commits us to participating with the other, uh, communities. And the, uh, to be clear, the, uh, and, and it's too early to have a budget for the, uh, proposal, and that would be another step that would come back here. But the sixty thousand and maybe some support and so on, that was a total cost that would be shared among the, uh, yeah, that wasn't sixty thousand each, that was...
No, that was a shared cost.
Yes. Uh, it's, it's sad, but it's a fact of life that in rural areas and, and urban centers, they don't have to, uh, you know, there's a business case, they don't have to do what, what these folks are doing here, eh? But...
Yes.
The sad reality is that, uh, if we don't do this, uh, you know, and look at even, uh, countries that, you know, aren't third world perhaps, but, you know, uh, like Vietnam, the prior, they, they put so much emphasis on training, technology... they, they put so much emphasis on training, technology and, and then the capital that follows, eh? So, you know, if you don't do it, uh, so, so we were hoping then that this evening we'd get a resolution to participate. The resolution is on page, oh, look at that, I'm old, eighteen. That would, uh, it wouldn't commit us to funding, but it would say that we'll participate in the, uh, overall strategy, the memorandum of understanding.
Yes.
And, uh, and so if, uh, you know, uh, council wished, uh, we could recommend that to our, actually it's the committee, the whole meeting, so I guess you could, you could recommend it to the next council meeting. And that would be a first step, knowing that somewhere down the road, uh, you're probably going to have to kick some money in to get in a position to compete for these dollars. And he's giving you an outline of what that might be, uh, maybe a hundred grand max, split three ways, you know?
Patrick, on that document you have confidential, do not distribute.
Yeah, this is the initial document that went out, so, you know, this can, this is, um, just why I was still going through and having the committee agree upon it and make sure, so.
So we don't need to pass that tonight?
Sorry?
We don't need to pass that resolution tonight, because you haven't spoken with First Nations yet.
Uh, to know that it, it wouldn't be finalized till everybody has signed on, but if it's passed tonight, then, and we know that you guys, you know.
That's what you're looking for, you're looking for municipalities to come forward and say, we'll participate or we won't.
Yes, okay.
So, so tonight you can't pass it, but you could recommend it to council, which would be a, a step forward to what you're, you're trying to get together. You're trying to pool a group of communities, including First Nation communities and all the rural counties on this end, uh, into, uh, a group that will fight for improved broadband.
And, uh, Inverness County and Victoria County have, uh, they've consented and, uh, Wagmacook. Discussions aren't finished, but they are very strong looking into it as well. They said they support it, but we haven't got them to officially.
You went to those guys, other guys first?
Sorry?
You went to those other guys first?
No.
But they, they've already adopted this resolution.
Yes.
There's, there you go too. I guess that's not tonight, that, that part's coming up, but it'd be nice, if you can do that for us, there will be fetal lobsters in it. That's right, you have cameras here, don't you? So do we, uh, do you have enough information from these guy, from these folks to?
It's been moved and seconded, uh, and the resolution will be just as worded here with our name in it. Okay, one discussion. Questions, call, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carried. So this is not confidential?
No.
Any other questions? Thank you, Patrick and Jeff.
You guys are doing the Lord's work. I mean, you, you read the Cape Breton Post about issues and that's not what you're talking about. Cell service and, and even landlines down in his community. And then some of the folks we're seeing in Richmond too, are telling us they're having a hard time doing business, so. Help those guys out so they can make money and pay our taxes.
Yes, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto our, uh, third presentation this evening. Uh, from Cape Breton University, we have the interim president Dale Keith, the vice president of finance Gordon Guinness, and the vice, vice president of academics, Richard McKinnon. Say that right?
Yeah.
Welcome you guys.
Thank you.
Guy in the middle there, he's been here before. He won't admit it, but it was a long time ago.
Just trying to get the computer to wake up here.
When was the last time you were here, Gord?
Yeah, how long, how long were you in public accounting? Five or six years?
Yeah, I was five years, so I was in, uh, an air study is probably eighty-four through to eighty-eight annually.
Best years of your life.
Yeah, learned a lot about municipal government from, uh, from Louis. That's why I'm in the university sector for the last seventeen years. Pleasure to be here.
So, thank you for, uh, for having us. I'm, uh, as the mayor or the warden said, I'm Dale Keith, uh, the interim president, vice chancellor at Cape Breton University. With me is Gordon McKinnis, VP Finance and Operations and, uh, VP Academics, Richard McKinnon. I'm going to give you a little presentation on, uh, some of the things that have gone on over the last fifteen years or so at Cape Breton University, where we are currently and where we're headed, uh, in the next few years. Uh, and then I'm going to turn it over to Gordon at the end. Gordon is going to give you, uh, an update on where we are with the presidential search, uh, process. So the last fifteen years, um, as many of you in this room would know, uh, Cape Breton University was founded by the community to provide post-secondary education to the sons and daughters of Cape Bretoners. It puts us in a unique situation that we are the only, uh, university in the province that was, uh, founded by the community, uh, itself. As you know, uh, the youth population has been declining in the area for many years. Uh, we also have, uh, the programs, uh, that students are choosing are changing. Uh, they're not the same programs that students chose fifteen years ago. Uh, so we've had to respond and we have responded. The institution has changed, uh, from a institution that was, uh, exclusively for local students to an institution that is keeping the local students as a priority and a focus, but also becoming a globally competitive, uh, institution. So if you look back, you know, fifteen years ago, we had just over three thousand, probably around thirty-four hundred students. Twenty-five hundred, uh, of those students came from Cape Breton, uh, seventy-five percent of our student body. Uh, we had less than a hundred international students, uh, around three percent of our student population. You jump forward to last year, our last academic year for which we have, you know, the full information, and, uh, we have again, still around thirty-one hundred students, uh, but now only thirteen hundred and seventy come from Cape Breton, forty-three percent of our student body. Um, and we had almost nine hundred international students, uh, or twenty-eight percent, about a factor of ten, uh, increase over a period of about fifteen years. That's just, you know, phenomenal growth. And you can see from about two thousand and nine on where we really had the majority of the growth there and put on a huge push internationally. With regards to the programs, uh, you could look back in, you know, two thousand and two, we had, uh, fourteen hundred, fifteen hundred students, uh, doing arts programs. Due to the sheer decline in the local demographic and the change in the makeup of our student body, we're now at the point where we have, uh, just over six hundred students doing arts programs. Business has been more or less stable for a number of years with the little, uh, bump there around twenty-twelve. That was due to a program that was under the Saudi Arabian, uh, Kingdom of Saudi Arabia Scholarship Program. We had at its peak around four hundred and forty odd, almost four hundred and fifty, uh, students from Saudi Arabia. That program has now ended and, uh, so the only students from Saudi Arabia that remain are finishing up their degree, but no new students are coming in. Uh, as I said, at its peak, we had about four hundred and fifty. Uh, we're now down to last year, we had, I think somewhere on the order of seventy. Uh, this year it will be a handful, uh, and we suspect that the rest of the, uh, students from Saudi Arabia will graduate this year. And then next year we will have essentially no students from Saudi Arabia. The same time, uh, over the last fifteen years, we've brought on new programs. Uh, nursing is a very strong program. It's grown from, uh, something on the order of about a hundred students to almost four hundred students now. Uh, last year it was, uh, almost three fifty, it'll be close to four hundred this year. Um, the hospitality tourism program has grown again, up to over three hundred students. Uh, engineering technology grown to three hundred. Uh, the MBA has just grown, uh, from less than fifty students, you know, fifteen years ago to well over three hundred students now, and it's growing again. Uh, this year, uh, public health program that we introduced in around two thousand and seven, uh, now has, uh, over a hundred students in that program. So there's change within the institution. Programs are declining, other programs are growing, are growing quite significantly. Uh, just sort of, you can just have a little sense of the change in the international students. So back in two thousand and two, as I said, we had less than a hundred students. Um, now we have, uh, almost nine hundred, uh, international students. And they're predominantly in one school, that's the Shannon School of Business. Uh, the students, international students predominantly come for the hospitality tourism, uh, and the MBA within the Shannon School of Business. Within science and technology, uh, they come for the engineering technology program. Uh, within arts and social science and professional studies, there are very few international students. So again, even though the distribution is, you know, just around thirty percent for the entire student body, for the schools, it gives you a dramatically different distribution of where the students are actually studying and what programs they're studying in. So currently, uh, we're in a situation where, um, our average costs go up on the order of about three, four percent a year, uh, due to simple inflation within the, you know, the basket of goods and services that we deal with. We are human resource, uh, heavy. We, uh, have, you know, buildings, infrastructure is quite significant, as well as energy costs are quite significant. So our costs go up on the order of about three to four percent a year. Whereas our revenues have been not going up quite as fast over the last number of years. For a period, uh, from two thousand and seven to two thousand and ten, there was a funding redistribution within the province. That meant that we lost about four million dollars annually in funding. Uh, on top of that, at the same time, we had a two point one million, uh, reduction in our nursing funding. Uh, and meanwhile, we were, as you saw, the nursing program was growing, uh, but now growing with a smaller funding, uh, for it. We then went through the back to balance period that all universities faced, where we had a ten percent decrease uh, in our operating budget. And, uh, then over the last three, four years, we've been in the one percent per year increase. So what it means is that our provincial funding has grown, uh, about six percent over ten years. So less than one percent per year, uh, over that period of time. The, the other component of our revenues is tuition, as you can imagine. Uh, we are regulated around tuition. And so in two thousand and seven to ten, our tuition rates were actually frozen. Uh, then we went through a period of three percent increases per year. Uh, and then in twenty fifteen, there was the opportunity to have the three percent increase per year, but also to have what was called a market reset or a market adjustment. And at that time, our board approved, uh, a tuition policy to move us to the provincial average. Those were all assuming that others were going to increase by three percent. Uh, in fact, others have increased by more than three percent. So as you'll see on the next slide, it means that we're actually about a year behind in terms of our tuition to moving to the provincial average. Uh, but that means that it's, you know, almost a six percent increase per year, uh, over a three-year period there, uh, in tuition. If you look at the tuition rates for the comparable programs at the other institutions within the province, uh, as I said, the, there's substantial increases for many of those institutions. Uh, and we are moving next year, we will be, uh, at just under seventy-four hundred dollars for, uh, full-time enrollment. Um, and the average within the province this year, uh, is just under seventy-four hundred. So essentially, this coming year or the current year that we're in, we're at the provincial average for last year. Uh, so we're still, uh, a little bit behind in that regard and still one of the lowest, uh, within the province, uh, for tuition. So our revenues, our operating budget, we have on the order of about fifty million dollar annual operating budget. About forty-five percent of that, twenty-two point four million, comes from provincial grant. Uh, we're now in the situation where fifty percent of the revenues come from tuition based, that's tuition and mandatory fees. Uh, and then there's another five percent that comes from, uh, other operational, uh, you know, ancillary operations, bookstore, parking revenue, et cetera. With regards to expenditures, about fifty-one percent, uh, goes to direct teaching costs. Uh, and then about another, the other forty-nine percent is broken down through enrollment services, uh, facilities costs, IT, uh, support costs and that sort of thing. And that, that's pretty standard for the sector to be basically on a fifty-fifty split between direct costs and, uh, support costs in administration and, uh, other teaching supports. So we have, uh, about three hundred and forty employees. We focused, uh, quite significantly on our research, uh, productivity and research agenda over the last ten years. Uh, but ten years ago, our research, annual research funding was less than two million dollars. Uh, and now last year we were just over five point five million. So we've more than doubled our research productivity in that time. Big part of that is connected to the Vasharan Center, uh, but we've also focused, uh, quite a lot and have grown our industry partnerships. Uh, back in twenty-ten, uh, we had essentially zero in terms of industry partnerships. Uh, last year, uh, we had just over a million dollars in industry sponsored, uh, research. So quite a substantial, uh, growth in that. Uh, in addition, uh, we support, uh, you know, students working in the communities through student work placements. Uh, and, uh, we are focusing quite a lot on rejuvenating, uh, our co-op and internship options within our, uh, programs. So overall, a very significant, uh, impact for, economic impact for Cape Breton. Uh, the vast majority of our goods and services are purchased, uh, on island. So within the next five years, um, the trends for domestic students, uh, in the local area are going to continue. Uh, it's getting more and more competitive. Uh, so what we're doing in terms of our modeling and our predictions, uh, going out, uh, five years, we will still stay right around where we are now, around thirty-one hundred students or so. Um, we will have a domestic population that's only about fifty-two percent of our total, uh, student population, whereas right now it's sixty-three. Um, we are, um, also focusing within the, uh, and working with the First Nations communities. We expect that the number of Aboriginal students studying at CBU will grow, uh, over the next number of years. Uh, and then also, uh, we're expecting the number of international students to grow, uh, to get up to about thirty-four percent within the next, uh, number of years. Uh, right now, uh, international students predominantly, largest, uh, single cohort is from China. Uh, about two-thirds of our international students come from China. Uh, but we have a large, uh, growing, uh, contingent from India. We have this year about a hundred and thirty-five students from India. Um, and that's grown, uh, where a couple of years ago, three, four years ago, it was essentially, uh, zero. And we're also focusing on developing other new markets, uh, in Vietnam. Uh, you saw a presentation about that earlier this evening. Uh, we're working, uh, to develop, uh, we have a few, a handful of students from Vietnam now. Uh, but we're, that's one of our expanding markets, uh, as well as some markets in South America. So over the next, uh, five years, uh, just to highlight a few of our priorities there. Uh, one of the big ones is human resource management through, uh, attrition and supporting programs through, uh, part-time teaching, uh, where we can. As you saw, the, the. Um, as you saw, the demand for some programs is on the decline while others, it's growing quite substantially. Uh, so we really need to sort of adjust, adjust investments to the areas that are growing, uh, and so that is a challenge within the university sector. Uh, we're also focusing on our endowment. Uh, right now, our endowment sits at thirty-five million. For a young institution, that's not bad, uh, but we really need to grow that quite substantially, uh, so that we can have a, uh, reserve there and have an endowment to help us to invest in those areas that are growing. Um, we're, we're doing a couple of things in terms of business development. We have a, uh, English language, uh, training partner, the International Center of English for Academic Purposes, ICAP, uh, they are moving on to, well, they have moved onto our campus now, uh, they provide, uh, English language, second language training, uh, for students that are coming to Canada, uh, predominantly to CBU, uh, to pursue post-secondary education. Um, they, uh, whenever there's a market that will need English language training, we go in with them as a partner, so they are with us in Vietnam, they are with us in, uh, South America. Uh, we are also developing, uh, international partnerships where we are delivering our programs abroad. Uh, we've delivered programs in Cairo for a number of years, uh, at a campus there. We've delivered programs in Kuwait, uh, and, uh, as of last year, we have partnerships with, uh, universities in China that will deliver our programs there. So some of those are what we call two plus twos, where students do two years, uh, at the institution in, uh, our partner institution, then they come to CBU and finish their degree. Some of them are fully offered, uh, at the partner institution. We're also developing, and it'll be in the market very soon, uh, some very interesting, uh, graduate level, master's level programs, uh, that are targeted to executives. Uh, there will be an online component to that, but then there will be a study in Cape Breton component that will be, uh, launched for next summer. Uh, as I said, it's going to be in the market very soon in terms of, uh, doing the marketing and promotion for that. That's going to be packaged with, um, the opportunity to come to Cape Breton for a couple of weeks during the summer and study, but then also we're going to build it into packages where, uh, individuals can bring their families, stay for an extra week or two, tack a vacation onto it. Uh, so our staff, uh, are reaching out to the, uh, tourism agencies, uh, within the various areas of the island, uh, to work there so that we can put together a comprehensive package that's available for, uh, executives, uh, professionals in, across North America that might be interested in coming and, uh, doing a, an advanced degree, uh, graduate degree through that me, means. So, uh, so there will be some opportunities there for, for partnerships as well. So with that, I'll flip it over to Gordon to give you a, an update on the Presidential Search.
Thanks Dale. So, um, the other piece of news, I guess, with respect to the university, as you're likely aware, um, we've been a bit, a bit of a state of transition with our leadership. Certainly, our senior team is, uh, has been in place for a long time and is strong, and the institution is moving forward, but we are presently in the search process, um, looking to have a president, a new president announced, uh, by the end of January of eighteen, uh, hopefully a little sooner than that, perhaps December, but a lot of it will, I guess, be, uh, influenced by how the next couple of months, um, do work out. There is a search committee, uh, which is a subcommittee of our Board of Governors, uh, which has been working since, uh, late spring, uh, on the Presidential Search process. We have engaged a firm by the name of Audgers-Burnston. They're out of Toronto with extensive experience in the recruitment of senior executives in post-secondary. Uh, they are working for our, uh, Board Committee, and, uh, I guess, uh, we, you'll be seeing a lot more on that in the coming months. Uh, by design, our public consultation process, which is in the phase that we are in right now, has been fairly quiet over the summer months while everybody was busy, uh, off on, uh, vacationing and enjoying the wonderful weather. Uh, but we have had a webpage established, and you'll see it on the screen, it's presidentialsearch.cbu.ca. Um, uh, ask that, you make note of that, or you can access it through the CBU main, uh, webpage. That is a, a survey instrument, and what we are doing is we are seeking the opinions of, uh, our local stakeholders, our communities, in terms of what sort of person should we be looking for in our next president of the university. Uh, it's an important, important hire for the university, but also a very important hire for the community that we, we are very proud to serve. So, uh, in the HR world, um, it's, uh, helping us develop, uh, what is referred to as the ideal candidate profile. Uh, what sort of person should we be looking for? What sort of, uh, personal experiences, qualifications, interests, et cetera? Um, we want to make sure that we get a good match and, uh, and do the right thing for, again, the institution, for the community. So that, uh, webpage is up. We've had over two hundred respondents to date, uh, very pleased with the way that's worked out, and that webpage will be live for another, um, you know, probably month or so, and we're really hoping people will take the opportunity to go there to, to assist our committee. Uh, the second step in that process will be town halls. They are scheduled for the eighteenth of September, that would be next Monday. So, uh, at four o'clock, uh, and with a repeat session at seven o'clock, we will be holding a town hall. It will be held at the Vasharan Center on our campus, uh, facilitated by Ian McNeil, uh, who will be helping us out. And again, we hope to have a, a good cross-section of, uh, community stakeholders show up and, again, uh, provide their insight in terms of, uh, of what we should be, uh, should be looking for in the way of a candidate. We've also had, I guess, a, a number of other inputs, including the Coalition for Stronger CBU. We've had groups sort of feeding into us, chambers of commerce, et cetera. Also a number of stakeholder meetings, uh, which will be scheduled for the next, uh, the next week or so. So while all of that is sort of, uh, moving forward and, uh, hopefully will be concluded, uh, hopefully in, in, uh, December, certainly in January, um, we are very much aware of the fact, as Dale has, has outlined, uh, while the institution is now globally focused, uh, by sheer necessity, given the demographic, uh, situation, we are also acutely aware of why we exist and the, the relationship we have with our communities and our stakeholders. So, uh, part of what we're about this evening is to, to leave with you, I guess, a couple of questions. Uh, we do consider, um, the residents of the, uh, the county here to be stakeholders of our institution, and, uh, as an asset of the island, are, uh, you getting what you need from CBU? And secondly, how can we help you with your agenda as a, um, as a municipality? So, you know, uh, hopefully tonight will be the beginning of a discussion, uh, which will be ongoing, um, you know, centered around some of those questions. We do have a very sincere desire to help. Uh, we have a lot of, uh, capacities, a lot of resources, and we're anxious to ensure that the community benefits to the extent, uh, that it can from the capacity we have as an organization. So with that, I'll, uh, turn it back to Dale to close out.
So, thank you, uh, very much for the opportunity to come and, uh, give you a little bit of an update on some of the things that are, have gone on and will be going on at, uh, CBU in the next number of years. Um, at this stage, uh, I know you have a full agenda, and we've already been here for a while, but if you have any comments or questions, I'd, uh, love to hear them, and I will do my best to try and answer any questions.
Open the floor to questions. Dale, um, you spoke of the provincial funding, uh, or you're losing four million in funding annually, and two point one for the nursing. Uh, is that provincial?
Yes.
Or are all other universities losing that as well?
Well, there, there's three schools of nursing, uh, within the province, so, uh, no. Um, and then with regards to the funding redistribution, there was two institutions that were negatively impacted with the two thousand and eight funding formula, that was us and Acadia. Uh, the other universities all received a greater share, uh, of the funding distribution at that point in time.
And nothing could be done about that?
We'll see.
Did I see something in the paper recently?
We're working on it.
Okay. So in respect to the other four million, that was for the whole university?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep.
If I may just to, sorry, uh, try and hear. If I may just to add to that, I guess, in the municipal world, if you think of it as the, uh, the equalization grant fund, uh, so there's, there's two questions really. It's how much money goes into the fund, and is it sufficient to support the sector-wide operation? Uh, in your world, that would be the municipal sector, and then secondly, what is the formula to determine who gets what? So what happened in two thousand and eight was the formula changed. Uh, there were two institutions that were negatively impacted, uh, in this province. We were one of those two, and then, uh, we also, uh, were impacted by the nursing, uh, grant as well. So really, it puts CBU and Acadia really in the same space in terms of six to six and a half million dollars, uh, of an annual loss, if nothing had have changed from that two thousand eight to two thousand eleven period. So it has been, uh, certainly quite a challenge for us. Um, so that, uh, layered on top of the, uh, the demographic decline, um, you know, has, has really dominated our agenda. The good news is, uh, the institution is healthy and a, uh, and the institution is moving forward, but, you know, adequately funded, we think we could be doing a lot more, uh, for our communities.
Or you spoke of the equalization as well. CBRM is kind of getting a negative end to that too.
Don't get him started.
In a prior, in a prior life, he, he was the architect of, uh, I, I think, well, anyway, we won't go there, but...
Yeah, no, it's, it's been a number of years, uh, Warden, since I've been around that, that file, but, uh, let's just say that there, uh, I think there was a very eloquent solution, uh, a number of years ago that could have been good for everybody, and, um, anyway.
Wasn't implemented.
There wasn't, uh, that was not implemented, yeah.
Any other comments?
I, I was just going to say, first of all, it's amazing how, uh, competitive your business is, uh, I mean, you're community-based and you're trying to respond to what the community's needs are, and, uh, wow, it, you think of universities as, uh, you know, somewhere you go to, you know, take it easy, but boy, your, your, your business is dog-eat-dog. However, uh, with regard to what can you do for municipal units, are, are there any, uh, particular, have you, have you been in this with other units, you know? Have you any examples of what you've, uh, accomplished, or is it something where, come see us, and, uh, if you have a real need, and we'll see if there's something you can do?
So I think the, the phase right now is just starting the dialogue.
Okay.
Seeing what we can do. Um, and I mean, we are a relatively small institution, three thousand students, so there are things that, uh, you know, we can't do, and we have, uh, other institutions that may be able to do it, uh, but there are really good areas where we can, uh, partner. Uh, we have real strengths in the renewable energy sector, uh, some of the industry partnerships around that. Uh, we have strengths developing within the Vasharan Center, uh, around oceans and various, uh, seafood and byproducts and that sort of thing. Um, and then also, you know, there's partnerships in other areas around renewable energy in particular, but, uh, lots of different opportunities. So at this stage, it's just exploring, so.
If you want to add, Gordon?
Yeah, and, and maybe just to, um, just an idea to put it out there, I mean, it's something that's been on my mind for a lot of years now, as, uh, somebody who's benefited from, um, you know, studying at the BAMF Center. Um, you know, is there anything we can be doing through a sort of corporate training, sort of specialized training, listening to our colleagues with respect to the, uh, the Vietnam market and the need there? Um, you know, could Cape Breton really be the East Coast BAMF Center in terms of, uh, specialized sort of, uh, training, maybe aimed towards maybe public, but private sector? So, you know, it's all sorts of things that we could, uh, we could be looking at, you know, both the service, I think the municipalities, uh, you know, target it, but also the broader needs of, uh, of the counties, um, on our, on our island.
Just to add to that, we have a real strong research base at the university in wide variety of areas, from the social sciences to the humanities to, to, uh, technology. We have a wide variety of research going on, as Dale showed. We've increased our funding, uh, dramatically in the last couple of years. And also, we continue to, despite the challenges, we continue to develop new programs. We've got, for example, this September, we've got a brand-new bilingual MBA program, and that's bilingual Chinese and, uh, English, and we've got thirty students signed up for that program already. We're still trying to get that organized, but, but we're in, we're in pretty good shape. Uh, we also have a brand-new program, it's called a Bachelor of Arts and Science in Environment, and again, that's starting this September with about twenty students signed up for that, and another, uh, new program in, uh, Applied Theater. So, you know, again, you'll see the, the diversity of our institution by just those three examples there. These are brand-spanking new programs that are just hot off the, uh, hot off the, uh...
Amazing how nimble you are. I mean, just looking at what's happened even in the last ten years, how your population has changed.
Yep, absolutely.
But when you speak of the programs, um, which programs have you eliminated? You say you have...
So we technically haven't, uh, eliminated any programs. Uh, you know, the number of sections, the number of selections and options within a program, uh, may decrease, uh, the class size, uh, has decreased. That, that's actually one of the challenges that I was getting at in the, sort of, the human resource management, in terms of maintaining that ability to offer a breadth of programs while some are decreasing, but yet you have to put resources into new developing programs. Uh, so, uh, we haven't actually eliminated, uh, programs. Um, it's just sort of sometimes reducing the number of options within those programs or, uh, trying to teach them in different ways. Uh, one of the things that we launched, uh, last year, uh, was a completely new model for universities. Uh, we call it the three-C model. You could do a course through the standard credits, the same as, you know, all university students do their courses, uh, or there was an option to do it for curiosity, uh, no cost, uh, it was streamed online, you could jump in and out, uh, and just pick it up for general interest. Uh, and then if you sort of, uh, well thought, well, I want to do it for a little bit more than curiosity, but I don't want to do the full thing, uh, you could actually do it for a certificate of participation, which was much lower cost than tuition, but you obviously didn't get credit towards a degree, you didn't do the full assignments and participate the same. Uh, and that, you know, we expected when we launched that, that we might get, you know, a hundred students over the five courses. Uh, we had over a thousand students jump into that, um, and then also, sort of, that built on a course that we developed and offered through, uh, Unamagi College, um, uh, and Stephen Augustine developed, it was the, uh, Learning from the Knowledge Keepers of Mi'kmaq. Uh, and when he launched that, uh, again, we marketed it in December for last January, uh, and we were expecting, uh, you know, maybe we'd get, uh, a couple of hundred students if we were lucky. Uh, the first night, we had over twelve thousand students from twenty-five countries around the world join in, and I think for something like, uh, eight out of the ten weeks that that course ran, uh, it was within the top five, uh, trending on Twitter within Canada. Uh, so it was a phenomenal success. Uh, and so we're, you know, exploring opportunities that way to sort of, how do you expand, uh, the traditional delivery of university courses, uh, and content out to the broader community? Uh, so there's lots of options there in terms of just, you know, for pure curiosity and for continued learning.
In, in the three-C, uh, program that you, uh, started last year, where was the one thousand people? Were they in the participation section, in the curiosity, or in the full course?
So there was, uh, for each of the courses, there was on the order of about thirty or so registered for credit, uh, so probably, I'll say a little over a hundred students took it for credit between the five courses that we offered that way. Uh, the vast majority, uh, took it for a certificate. Uh, those students were streamed online, uh, and so they did it, uh, smaller fee than tuition. Uh, they came from all across, uh, North America.
Well, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
And maybe we'll be furthering discussions with you about what you can do for us.
Absolutely. We're looking forward to it. We're looking forward to it. Till next time.
Moving on to item five, is a motion to amend the municipality of the County of Richmond travel policy and change Section 1.3 redisbursements to read the following. To be eligible for payment, travel expenses forms must be presented for approval no later than 90 days after return. And to add the following to Section 1.3i, which is vehicle use. For outer province travel, reimbursement would be the lesser of, A, the total cost of economy airfare, air parking, and travel to and from the airport. Or, I just want to add the "to" there, it says "to" the airport. Just have "to" the airport there. So, I'll put "to" and "from." And then mileage at the present provincial rate per kilometers per Section 1.3i under vehicle use. We have a motion to... It's been moved by Counselor Bushay to amend the travel policy for the County of Richmond with an amendment. And it's been seconded by Deputy Warden on discussion. Questions been called. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carried. Moving on to item six, which is a motion to recommend to Council that the organizational review report, which is attached to your package, that was prepared for the municipality of Richmond be posted on our website. On discussion, any discussion there in that before we make a motion? I'm wondering first if we have to remove any privacy or confidentiality on this. Was there on this part of it? Should we have a motion for that? Well, the names wouldn't be private and confidential, but was the document given to us with private confidentiality? I thought, you made the comment, I don't see it there per se. But should we make a motion to remove that first?
I think you're, the first one that you, that you looked at in camera on June 12th was a draft document, and I believe that's the one that may have had in camera. You made some decisions at a council meeting later that night, but then that draft document was finalized and this document reflects that. So, I think this is the real thing, so I don't know that there's anything in there that I recall, but are you aware of anything that perhaps should not be, not be available to...
No, it's not a matter of not available, just I think we have to, private confidentiality was put on a document, we need to be the ones to remove that. So, just in the event that, that was there, I think we should have a motion to remove it. And I'm just looking for, that first meeting was in May, wasn't it? Is this the date on that? So, because we had a couple of meetings in relation to this. That's when this one was released, but the first one, because there are things in that, that, in that doc, in this document that are not in the one we received. So, I'm wondering when we're making a motion to put on the website the document involved in the organizational review, this is not all it.
Can I ask you, you had a meeting on July 4th where this was actually on the agenda, and this was the final report that was on the agenda. Was that distributed as part of the package? Just to the counselors or to...
Just to counselors.
Was it a document that the public could access at that time? Okay. Yeah, it's fine. So, for sure, if there's something that someone's aware of there that, that, you know, would require confidentiality, I'm just not certain what it is, but...
No, I just want to make sure it's removed and... No, I think it was when he first presented it to us. In the event that he does, though, in the event that SPL did have that on it.
Yeah, I think he took it off when he, I think the reason he probably, I've never met the man, but I think the reason he probably had that on there is because it was not final. Yeah, it was still a work in progress. And I think this is the last one, but...
Yeah, let's make a motion to remove in case there is private confidentiality attached to this. It's ours, but just in case. So, okay, there's been a motion made to remove any privilege and confidentiality to Council on the organizational review document, and seconded by Deputy Warden on discussion. Questions been called. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carried. Now, we'll have a motion to post this publicly on our website. It's been moved by Counselor Bushay to post the organizational review submitted June 24th, 2017, and been seconded by Deputy Warden that this gets posted on our website in the form that was presented to us on discussion. Questions been called. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carried. Onto item seven, on the agenda, which is correspondence and Louis?
Just an email that I received from Richmond County Literacy Network, asking, well, I'll read it. As indicated at last week's council meeting, the request for core funding has been denied in the amount of $15,000. Without the core funding, a major decision will need to be made regarding the future operation of the organization, especially as it pertains to the air shaft location. She's requesting a letter indicating in writing the reason municipal staff and our council denied our funding request this year. They'd like to have it by the 27th. I'm not sure you can provide a particular reason. I know you're part of the organizational report review, as you were going to do a major review of the grant funds that you do a lot and how you give them out, but I wasn't here, is there any particular, it was just a decision that council made, huh?
Counselor Bushay, your mic?
It was a decision that council made after reviewing the monies that council has been putting out to the Literacy Network for years, and at this time, we've decided that the money can go somewhere else, so we've decided to delete them off of the core funding.
Any other comments? I met with them on the 15th of August, with some of the members on their board, and I explained that. Due to some of the reserves, I guess, they had, we felt this year, we didn't, they didn't require our money to continue, so a decision was made with that as well in mind.
Okay, I'll tell them that. Is that consensus?
Put that in an email and CC us all.
Yep.
Is that okay for both of you guys? Okay. Counselor Bushay, do you want to add your grant in here as well? The next item is grants, we'll need a motion to approve. One is for the Pitta De Grau Red Caps Municipal District Activity Fund, District 1, and I believe that was for insurance for their event in, in the summer, I guess. And Counselor Bushay, your grant? Your mic?
For the St. Peter's Museum of $800 for a fund-raising event.
Okay, out of your activity fund?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll need a motion to approve both of those. It's been moved by Deputy Warden McLean and seconded by Counselor Bushay, that grant from District Activity Fund, District 1, $500, and Activity Fund, District 4, for $800, approved on discussion. Questions been called. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Moving on for information purposes, you have that in your package, the list of checks for June and July and August as well. If you have any questions, you can email myself or the CAO. Onto item eight.
Just note, that note from the Better, the Business Cape Breton, very positive, they're not looking for anything, but that was just for information purposes to let you know that they had returned the surplus amounts. That doesn't usually happen, I bet you, eh? I bet your folks usually come back for more, so that's very nice.
That was what, 1,800 or...?
1,300 or 1,400, but it's not the amount, it's the top that counts.
The, moving on to item eight, which is items added. One of them is myself, the posting of visa statements, and what I wanted was to post all visa statements going back to November 2016 online, along with our expenses. Can we have a motion for that? It's been moved by Counselor Bushay, seconded by Deputy Warden, that all the visa statements from November 2016 be posted online to current and continue that in the future. On discussion, questions called. All those in favor signify by saying aye, or put up your right hand, sorry. And the other item, I guess, that I had added was posting of the budget, but we're being told we don't even need a motion. They will post the budget, will take the budget as presented to us August 16th and scan that into PDF and post that online. You're okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't matter which way you go. If you want to make a motion, do it, that's fine.
We'll make a motion, then. Been moved by Counselor Bushay, seconded by Deputy Warden, that the budget as presented August 16th be presented online in PDF format. On discussion, questions been called. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carried. Onto item nine, which is a 15-minute question period. Anyone from the audience? Oh, I missed you, you're right. CAO in reference, sorry.
Oh, no, I've been losing weight and folks don't see me very well anymore.
We had that at our last meeting.
Yes, never, never addressed it, I don't think.
In camera.
Do you, do you want to have a bylaw or a policy, could be either one, that, the main thing that it would do is limit the, the amount of a contract that the CAO can enter into without coming to council? And the only reason I raise this is because of the, some of the conversations that I've had with you, you know, you've, at times, expressed, all of you, well, some of you anyway, concerns that perhaps there were contracts entered into at times that it came back to that the CEO had authority to do that, and, you know, you weren't certain whether or not they, there were, there is a limit on purchasing policy. That doesn't seem to have been an overriding factor. So, if you would like this, the other time is right now to do it, you know, you'd say, and it's something, you know, you don't necessarily need, you function well without it. I've attached a couple of examples from the municipal affairs provided of municipal units that do it. One is Geisbrun, I think, and one is New Blasco, and they set limits there of what the CAO can enter into on your behalf without council approval. So, I don't know if this is something you want to do tonight, if you want to think about it. I quite frankly forgot about it, I had it on the agenda for another meeting, so...
Your mic, Counselor Bushay?
Yeah, I'd just like to see it at another meeting when we have more time to discuss it. We're coming into a question period now, and then we're going in camera, I understand.
I don't think we have to go in camera, but, all right, perhaps some food for thought and...
We're gonna go in camera for a couple minutes?
Pardon?
We were going in camera for a couple minutes?
Is it on the agenda?
Personnel?
Yeah, but I'm not, I didn't, I don't have the stuff to do it. No, I don't think it's necessary yet.
I think this year, we need a little more thought on it. One of them has numerical limits and the other one really doesn't have, so I think it is something, it's something definitely, Counselor Bushay, you...
And perhaps a more, more time to, yeah, good thought, yeah.
Yeah, we need a little more time for that.
Okay.
For sure. Okay, we'll move on to the question period. Anyone has any questions or comments? You can state your name.
Robbie Fugere, Pitta De Grau. With, pardon me, with respect to item six, I want to commend you to, for having decided to put online the organizational review report that was prepared for the municipality. Some time ago, I had asked a question, how much did that cost us as taxpayers? And the initial response was, at that time, and I think it was back in May sometime, that we were $8,000 over budget. And I think at that time, again, I had suggested that I might be looking for that answer down the road. So, do we have a final figure on what that review cost us as taxpayers? The total number?
So far, we've paid over $19,000 to SPL. Not sure if there's any, we haven't gotten any actual bills, correct?
So, was the initial contract 30?
22, I thought. And the invoice is total, like the last payment was 18,000, and then we had paid almost 11 or 12 before that. And I don't think, I don't think there's anything outstanding.
Yeah, unless it's legal costs that were contracted that we're not aware of. So, maybe the best thing would be if we responded to them by email or something like that?
You could do that, yes.
There was an overage, I asked how it was doing, and it said there was an overage of $8,000 that was covered 50/50 by Service Nova Scotia. I was told that Service Nova Scotia paid, paid half of the initial...
I think we were told they were paying, we were paying, they were giving us $11,000 and we found out we got 15 from them, because when we asked if they'd pay any, any part of the overage, they said no, but we ended up getting 15 from them, so...
Which the extra four just happened to be half eight, but I don't...
Yeah. Yeah, so, and as Louis says, we don't know if we're getting any extra legal cost.
But the actual amount of money paid to SPL, you know, I, I'd like to give you the exact amount, if you can give me until tomorrow and...
You can take as much time as you need.
No, 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 it's just a matter of the, I haven't been here for...
Oh, no, I understand.
And, and asking the treasurer, who will have that at his fingertips, and I'll copy the counselors. How would that be?
There was a check that just went through for over 18 to them, it's in this list. You remember another one, Yvonne?
That would be great. And again, on that same topic, again, with the, your decision tonight to post that, that's one thing, and I'm happy for that. I think that's something that I had asked at that particular meeting, but I'm reading the minutes of the meetings, and I don't see where council adopted or approved that report. Am I right or am I wrong in that?
I would almost say you might be right. I would almost say you might be right. We adopted portions of the report. I don't know if we actually adopted the whole report. Because what you're seeing there is not the whole report, as I remember. There was a lot of other information, which there are names on it that maybe can't be released. But not because of the names, there might be, I don't know if there was personal information on it. So you're getting.
So what you're going, what you're going to be, what you're going to be putting online is part of a report?
Yeah, it's not everything we received in our discussions.
See, this is where, this is where I have some difficulty. I understood this to be an organizational and structural review.
It was.
So that names would not factor in the equation in terms of, it was, if it was strictly an organizational and structural review, then names would have been immaterial or wouldn't have factored in at all. So that the total report would have gone out to the public. But what you were, what you're going to put online, from what you're telling me now, and if I hadn't asked a question, I think I would have gone home thinking that the report was going to be put online. But what I'm hearing now is that part of the report will be going online.
I think I made the comment that it, it's not everything as I remember in the meeting, but it is a final report, which maybe encompassed everything that was in the meeting.
I don't know if you're getting the.
Final report that we received is what's going to be posted online.
Yeah.
We are not leaving anything out there. That final report that we received from SPL, that final report is going to be posted online.
Okay. And that final report that you received from SPL, was it, was it approved by council?
I'm not 100% sure of this document because it was more than one of these. We did have one or two meetings, and there was differences from this to the other, so. But this does say final, and it's dated June 24th. So I was just trying to remember when the other meetings were. Because was this document provided to us July 4th?
Yes.
This one here? So if you checked July 4th minutes?
I did.
And did you see anything in there?
No.
In reference to this document?
No.
August 16th would have been the next one that will be approved at our next meeting.
Anyway, what I've read, what I've read to date, I have no indication. Of the minutes I've read to date. I have not seen. It doesn't mean, it's not there. It doesn't mean you didn't do it. I'm saying I haven't read it. Now, if you've done it, and you can point me to that page, I could read it. But if you haven't approved it, then it seems to me that there was a step missed along the way, in my opinion, anyway, so.
Because June 24th was a Saturday that this report was finalized, was the date that's on it. So we didn't meet that day, unless I'm in the wrong year. So I don't know which meeting, other than July 4th, that that would have come up at to be approved. But we did approve parts of the document. And those parts that we approved are not in this document. Yeah.
We discussed that at our last meeting, I thought, and I don't know if we got to the point where we.
I, I, I thought the 16th there was one. You, you, you guys should put your mics on, I'll put them both on. I, I, at August 16th, I thought you got us to approve that. Was August 16th considered?
No, August 16th was primarily for.
Approval of the budget.
For the budget, yeah.
Yeah, but did we speak of it there?
I don't think.
I, I could be wrong in saying this, but I think that maybe when this may have been the topic when we were in camera, because I, the last time that we got together as council, we definitely spoke of whether or not we had approved this. I just don't remember exactly when that conversation took place.
This is the 16th, I thought, of August.
I think Counselor McLean is right, but.
Your, your mic, so the public's.
I think Counselor McLean is right. We did look at it, we went through part of it, and then decided to review it at a later date. So I don't think we, we made a motion to approve it.
No, I think you're right, and, and you decided to post it anyway.
We decided to post it anyway, yeah.
That's when we discussed it, yeah. But did we make a motion? Yeah, we'll check into that, Robbie, and, but at least we're going to post it anyway. Approved or not, we're going to post it. Any other questions, comments?
Good. Jermaine McDonald from St. Peters. And I think in the past, I asked about whether or not you could post the check registers, you know, the checks that you guys approved tonight. And I thought that that was going to be done, but I, I know that I don't see it. So just wondering if something changed with that? Because I know you can FOIPAP them, because I have in the past. So if it is something that's FOIPAP-able, you know, why not? It would give all transparency. You have your visa, you have your expenses, the checks would kind of just do a total.
They're public information anyway, right?
I believe so, I don't know, will it be confidential about a check? So, so when you say, so you're talking with the checks issued list that they saw, that they went through here this evening?
Yes, when I FOIPAP them in the past, it was just like the check register.
They call it a check register?
That's what it was called back when. Yep, just a list of checks, yeah.
Counselor Bushay?
I'd like to see that done, I do FOIPAP and stuff like that. We're taking up too much time with our staff, and I don't think there's any issues with posting them. I just don't want to go back, you know, from this day forward, we'll, we'll post them for, for the public to see.
I think if we go back to this council, because they're just PDF format that you scanned to anyway. Yeah, so I don't think it's going to be a lot of work.
Yeah, that would be, that would be good.
Yeah, and we'll do that.
And the other thing was, just out of curiosity, the, I think we talked about going back and asking municipal affairs if they would give us any money on the forensic audit costs. Did anything come of that?
Nothing.
And the reason, or can you say?
I don't know, but maybe Louis can ask as well.
I, I wasn't aware of that, this discussion.
Since they asked us to do what they say.
Well, I brought it up at a, at a past meeting. And the reason I did is because it was our knowledge as a public that the forensic audit was frowned upon by municipal affairs. And they gave the reasons at the time. And then all of a sudden, when some people were asked questions at the legislature, all of a sudden, our minister at that point got up and said that one of the reasons that they, that they recommended, or their staff recommended the audit was because they felt it needed to be done. So either they recommended it, or they didn't recommend it. And if they did, then I think that they should at least take, you know, responsibility for some of the costs.
Money's nice. And so was that request made to the provincial government?
There was an email sent, mayor sent an email. Said they weren't funding it, but we never saw the email, so, or I didn't anyway, so.
Well, I'll follow up, if you wish, and find out what actually happened, and make sure that, that you're aware. And Emily, well, I was going to say Emily probably had her job.
She's off now.
So, so she could handle a question like that now, you know, going into labor. But anyway, no, I'll follow up if you want, yeah, if you wish, yeah.
Yeah.
The idea about posting the checks is probably, if you want to do that, is that something that could be done fairly easily? But you should probably recommend that to council, just to make sure at some point in the future somebody doesn't say, why do you do that, if you don't mind?
Yeah, when we come out, we'll make a motion. Come out of the. We're going in camera, or you want to do it right now?
No, no, we're not going in camera, do it right now.
Oh, you don't want to go in camera, okay. No, 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 no.
And just going back to the, just going back to the audit, like, could we ask for a written statement as to who recommended the audit from municipal affairs as well? Like I said, they're, they're stating that they, they did recommend it.
When you.
Do you have, do you have, do you have information about where that's at in Hansard or something like that, you know, that we could?
Oh, Hansard, definitely.
Where we could refer to that?
Definitely.
You wouldn't mind?
Wouldn't mind at all.
Just emailing to us or something like that, just so we make our work.
I'll email it to Yvonne.
Okay.
Okay. Yep, great. Okay, thank you very much.
If, if anything ever came out of it, I mean.
We're not in camera now. Okay, just a motion to adjourn then, if we're not going in camera.
Do you want to move that we post the checks?
Make a motion for that to be moved by Counselor Bushay, that we post the checks back to November 2016. Been seconded by Deputy Warden on discussion. Questions been called, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carried. Motion, unless anyone else has a question? Motion to adjourn. Then a motion to adjourn, we'll adjourn.